I will hereby call this meeting to order. This is a special session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Today is Wednesday, October 27th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
President Barker?
Here.
Scambler?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Right, glad everyone's here could make it on a good Wednesday. Today's agenda summation. As we move through the agenda, we'll have designation of council representative for police collective bargaining. Then we have legislation for second readings and resolutions. We have appropriation ordinance 21-02 and ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing 2022 civil city budget for the City of Bloomington. Then we have ordinance 21-39 and ordinance to amend ordinance 20-22, which fix salaries for officers of the of the police and fire departments for the year 2021, regarding pay grade changes for police lieutenants and captains, additional pay and retention play. Retention pay, sorry. Then we'll move to ordinance 21-36 and ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the City of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2022. Then we'll move to ordinance 21-37 and ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers, non-union and ASME employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2022. And we'll move to ordinance 21-38 to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the City of Bloomington for the year 2022. Then we will consider matters pertaining to the council schedule before we adjourn for the evening. Now, the first thing on our agenda is designation of council representative for police collective bargaining. And before we get started, under Bloomington Municipal Code 2.32.060, the council can designate a spokesperson or representative to attend police collective bargaining sessions. Meetings to discuss that the next police contract are beginning. There is a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, October 28th, 2021 at 10:30 a.m. So tonight's agenda has been revised to provide an opportunity for the council to consider a motion to designate a representative. In the past years, absent such a designation by the council, council staff has attended the bargaining session to observe. I would like to nominate Councilmember Susan Sandberg to be this council's representative for police collective bargaining. So I will entertain a motion as such. Councilmember Scambler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that the council formally designate Councilmember Susan Sandberg as its representative for the upcoming police collective bargaining sessions.
I would like to second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. I don't quite know if this is proper, but Councilmember Rallo. Well, before you get started, I was going to say I didn't know if it was proper, but I'd like to offer council members, as well as the nominee, an opportunity to say a few words on this motion, if that's proper. Councilmember Flaherty?
I think it can fall into the context of debate on the motion, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rallo, did you have anything?
Yes, well, I think it's an excellent idea, but I wondered about the role of the representative. Could Stephen Lucas describe a bit about that? Is the roles of the representatives simply to be be present and observe? Or does she have the ability to ask questions?
Yes, thank you. As President Sims noted, and over the past several years, typically council staff has sat in on these bargaining sessions as an observer. I'm not actually aware of a time where a council member of the council sat in on these sessions. I would caution the council that the representative really can't speak for the full council more than the council has spoken for itself. So aside from any formal statements the council has made, I think this the spokesperson would certainly be able to attend, observe, yes, ask questions, share, share information back to the council to report on how the negotiations are proceeding, but but should do so in the context of the ground rules of the negotiations and be mindful that the full council speaks for itself.
Yes, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Sandberg, I'd like to say beautiful ass if that's okay with you. Anything else or any other comments? Councilmember Smith?
I would like, thank you, President Sims, I would like if Mr. Lucas would offer his opinion. If, say, the council member who takes this role is sick or has another emergency of some kind, does that, does it allow us to step in? One of, another one of us to step in to listen to the negotiations? Or is that prevented?
The code section that was referenced by President Sims contemplates a representative from the council. So I would encourage whoever is is appointed to make themselves available and make every effort to attend each of the sessions. Much of the benefit of having one person sit in is is that they are able to see the negotiations as they progress and have all the context when attending, but I don't know that it's. I would say one, one person should sit in on the negotiations.
Okay, understood.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or debate from council members? Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry, I got here as quickly as I could.
Okay, welcome, welcome this evening, council member.
Thank you. Can I ask that the question be restated?
The question or the motion?
Yeah, the, what is the motion that, can it be restated?
Yes, Councilmember Scambler? Or if I, go ahead. Well, I was just going to try to paraphrase, trying to remember and say.
Sure, I'll happily restate.
Thank you.
I'd like to move that the council designate Councilmember Susan Sandberg as its representative for the upcoming police collective bargaining sessions.
Thank you.
And it has been moved and seconded, so thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Okay, do you have any other comments or council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wonder if council attorney Lucas could also speak to the extent to which the council and its representatives, representative in this procedure actually has a say in the matter? If that can be succinctly stated somewhere.
Again, I think my answer would be that that the spokesperson really can't speak for the council more than the council has spoken for itself, so I would caution this person to to be mindful of that. I know the council has recently expressed a view toward police salaries via resolution, but beyond any formal statements that the council itself has adopted or positions, I think this person would be there as an observer and as someone who could ask questions and report back to the full council.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Hey, thank you very much. Councilmember Rallo?
Well, just to go a little further, Mr. Lucas, then, is the appropriate means by which the council express their collective opinion that could be conveyed by the representative? Would that be in the form of a resolution, something formal?
Potentially, yes.
Are there any other means?
The bargaining agreement that eventually comes to you all for approval is another opportunity for the council to voice its opinion on on the contract. It's certainly difficult for all nine of you to, I think, weigh in and participate in negotiations. That's why I think the city code provides for this this bargaining process and allows for a council representative. Certainly, individuals are free to reach out to to the mayor's office or to the other members of the bargaining team individually to express their views. I would encourage you all to do that. But I could certainly see a further resolution being another opportunity for the council to express its its view on on a matter.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, I'd like to ask, in the past, it's traditionally been a member of staff who's been council's representative at negotiations. Does the representative ever speak for any reason at those negotiations, or are they simply there to observe and report back to the council? Mr. Lucas?
I have sat in on one contract negotiation, and yes, there were times where I spoke. So, yes. To various ends, it is not. Our code contemplates someone who attends and observes. It's not a position where staff has advocated a particular outcome of the contract or suggested that the administration adopt or, you know, reject a proposal from the union. So gathering information, clarifying what proposals are being shared back and forth. The person doesn't need to sit there mute, but they aren't there to, again, I, the person I don't think would be authorized to speak on behalf of the council more than the council has authorized them to. I guess I would.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mr. Rooker is here, the president, to speak on that matter, I believe.
I would be happy to offer some input if it would be helpful, Councilmember Bowlin. I've sat in on a few of these bargaining sessions with a council representative there, and I think Stephen has characterized it correctly. It's not that the council representative is mute. I've seen council observers ask questions about a particular proposal that either side was was bringing forward or had written down and exchanged. They might try to get clarification or help to interpret things sometimes when something might be lost in translation between the bargaining teams. So it's not a silent rule, but certainly, you know, it's the the individual teams who are crafting the proposals that go back and forth, trying to work towards an agreement.
So I'd like to turn the question to Councilmember Sandberg, who is the nominee. Councilmember Sandberg, like, I I recognize your your strong political opinion here, and I share many of your concerns. Can you speak to what you've just heard? Like, you know, do you have any concern about basically even inadvertently intervening in what is supposed to be a negotiation between these two independent parties? What do you say?
No, I have no feelings that I could not be anything other than a fair observer. I have looked at all the ground rules, and I will certainly abide by all of them. I understand that this is a bargaining in good faith process, one that council has not typically had the opportunity to sit in on. Sure. But since we as a council do sign off on all the agreements once they are formed, I feel very strongly that a council observer is needed in in these proceedings. I have looked over the schedule, I am available for all of the sessions that are currently on the calendar, and again, I will take good notes. I think the only question I would have is what would be the appropriate mechanism for me to report back to the council? If much of what goes on in a collective bargaining agreement is is kept somewhat confidential, that people are not free to necessarily speak openly until the negotiations are complete, how would the council like me to report back what I am observing?
Well, that I think is a legal question, too, that I would turn to Mr. Lucas. I mean, what would Councilmember Sandberg be able to say and not say after witnessing the negotiations?
I don't have the set of ground rules pulled up in front of me. We'd be certainly happy to go over those with Councilmember Sandberg and talk about the scope of what what she could report back within those rules. The general direction of negotiations, I certainly think would be fair game, but we could certainly go over that in more detail with the representative to make sure we're following those rules.
But at the very least, individual members could contact her and ask her take on the negotiations, is that correct?
I think that's correct, yes.
And it would be incumbent upon all of us to not reveal those. I mean, this will be true whether it was a staff member of council or a council member. It'd be incumbent upon us to not reveal privileged knowledge, is that correct?
I think the type of information that can be shared with the full council doesn't change, regardless if it's staff or a council member that sits in, and I think the same rules would apply to what information the council could share publicly, regardless of who sits in.
Very good, thank you both.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I did. I had a further question maybe for Mr. Lucas or Mr. Rooker. So our representative, Councilmember Sandberg is nominated. When she reports back to council on the information that she's gleaned from the negotiations, do we have the latitude, do council members have the latitude to discuss the negotiations with the administration outside of those negotiations? Based on that information that we that we gather?
I don't know if you want to address that for Stephen or?
I think the administration and the council are part of the city. I think you all are free to communicate as you need to. I don't know if Mr. Rooker has a different opinion, but again, I'd be happy to take a look at those contract negotiation ground rules with with members in detail. I don't think those rules really change based on whether it's a council staff member that sits in or a council member. And, Mr. Rooker, I don't know if you have anything to add there?
And, you know, I just would caution the the process of of going through back and forth, usually through dozens of proposals, counter proposals and redrafts, that's done by the bargaining team. And I think, you know, from our perspective, the council's primary role, once the two sides have reached a deal, and the membership of the union, whichever union it is, has voted to approve that deal, is to ratify or to review the agreement and ratify or not ratify the agreement at that point. So I'm not sure precisely what sort of conversations you have in mind, Councilmember Rallo. Certainly, those conversations wouldn't be prohibited, but just trying to to make sure we're mindful of everybody's role. I don't think there's anything wrong with the observer reporting back. I don't think there's anything wrong with communication between the administration and the council members, but I do just want to reiterate and be clear that the proposals are crafted by the individual teams and the members of those teams.
I understand that, and so to make certain that we don't have conflicts regarding this. Just simply inquiring how we can participate and to what extent we can. I mean, clearly, in the past, we've been quite passive, and I think that if ratification is expected, then our consent is necessary. And I think that communication is important in both ways. So communication between the council and the mayor will help to ensure that that ratification occurs. So that's my, that's my aim of the question, so, thanks, thanks for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Any other council members? Okay, before we go to final comment by Councilmember Sandberg, if she has anything.
Let me see. What I want me to say?
What I would like to say is it was never my understanding that our council representative, either be it a colleague or be council staff, are part of the negotiation process. And I think the ground rules speak for themselves with regard to confidentiality and the latitude with which council member can report. Some things surely can, some things will be prohibited through the confidentiality agreements. And I think that's just something we have to work through. And as Mr. Lucas said, whatever discussions would be within the framework of what she's allowed to share. And I think they'll work that out. So I would also like to say that the reason we came about to this this evening is that, if you recall, this council had a resolution having to do with police salaries at past seven to two. And it has evolved to the point that none of us in any recollection that I can recall had staff or council members sit in on negotiation, it was always staff. So this is a little bit different, but I think with in lieu of the 72 vote on that resolution, this seems proper to me, and I'm happy to support our participation in the manner in which the ground rules allow. Councilmember Sandberg, do you have any final thing to say?
Yes, thank you for the nomination, and I will appreciate the support. It will be my honor to be a part of this. It's a professional process, one that I certainly will view as as confidential as need be, but yet I will be taking good and careful notes. I will be happy to speak with any of my colleagues about the proceedings as they go. I'm cautiously optimistic that things are going to go very smoothly. I think in large part because of the preamble, because of the very considerable conversations and debates that we have had leading up to this budget decision tonight. And so, again, I'm optimistic. I will be primarily a silent observer, but an observant one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. And I will add lastly, is that this role on the council of being observer in negotiations will happen whether or not or not dependent on the outcome of tonight's vote on the budget. So I just thought I'd let you know that. Now, seeing no more comments and if there are no objections, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion as presented and has been seconded?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Abstain.
President Barker?
Yes.
Scambler?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Abstain.
Thank you, and that motion passes 702. And thank you very much for your participation, council members. We do have legislation for second reason and resolutions this evening. Councilmember Flaherty, is it proper to recognize the floor for the mayor before we get into proceedings? Or should we introduce first?
I think you are free to recognize the mayor to provide an overall statement if you'd like.
Thank you very much. Mayor Hamilton, if you're ready, you do have the floor.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the council. I'll be brief, I won't add much to previous remarks about the 2022 budget. Just to summarize, I think we have a very good budget for 2022 to advance recovery, add inclusion, address climate justice. We agree on much, much more than we may disagree on, and it's okay that there are some differences. They've been resolved, many of them through discussion over six months and voting, and that's how democracy works. There are two issues that have persisted a bit. One relating to public safety, particularly police, and another in the field of climate-related investments, including staff position. And let me just very briefly address each of those regarding public safety. First, I want to put it in context quickly. The, since I've been mayor, particularly since 2016, with investments beginning with public safety, local income tax that we we added have brought us to be the only city in Indiana that has a Kalia accredited police department and an ISO ranked fire department. We are the only city with the excellence of both of those in one place, and our overall crime rate continues to go down and fire saves and the call responses show why we earn that top ranking. But we're never done, and the 2022 budget does have major new investments in this very basic service of public safety, especially the police department, which we know is under stress. 16 and a half new positions, unprecedented funding. And as I shared yesterday in the update I gave on the budget, the $5,000 one-time retention bonus that is included in this budget, as we're beginning the labor negotiations this week, we will start with an assumption that that $5,000 will be in the new base and bring a 2023 agreement to council that we'll want to do to assure we have the revenue ongoing to support that. I'll also just note we continue the work of the Future Policing Task Force to continue to address and look to how that will evolve in the future. Second, on the climate investment front, again, first, just very basic context, this administration, with your support, fully embraces the challenge of the climate emergency, and we've taken unprecedented steps to address this existential threat. The first-ever greenhouse gas inventory, Sustainability Action Plan, Climate Action Plan, unprecedented investments, expanding solar production for the city, new positions, new programs. But we are never done here either. And the question ultimately is impact and the outcomes we want to see. As I clarified in yesterday's budget update as well, we do plan, as administration, to bring $10 million of new bond proposals in the first half of next year that will focus on sustainable infrastructure through a parks bond and a general obligation bond. We also plan to advance the community-based Green Ribbon Panel with new staffing that we help pay for with ARPA funds. And finally, we plan to supplement our outstanding Assistant Director for Sustainability Law and Clemens with a new position at ESD to help accelerate the internal city efforts that paid for with funds originally scheduled and dedicated to sanitation operations. I appreciate the input from the full community and council members over the past six months. I believe we have an excellent 2022 budget that will help our community recover forward, overcoming an historic pandemic and the wrenching human and economic fallout from that. Our community needs this budget, and I strongly urge you to support it tonight. I want to just close with thanks to the staff who prepare all of this budget and who will deliver all the results, outstanding city staff. A special shout out to Controller Jeff Underwood and his team for bringing it forward. And I'll hand it back to you, thanks for the for the couple minutes here, and I hope you will support the budget tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. And before we proceed, if I may go just out of order a little bit, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Susan Sandberg for stepping up for the role of council observer. So I just wanted to get that on the record, thank you very much. Okay, and tonight's budget related legislation. Tonight's special session serves as a continuation of the adoption meeting that began on October 13th for appropriation ordinance 21-02, the 2022 civil city budget. Please note that under state law, November 1st, 2021 is the last possible date for the council to adopt a 2022 budget and to fix salaries for all employees, including elected officials. Please remember that two amendments have been prepared and included in tonight's meeting packet for each of the two public safety or salary ordinances. Ordinance 21-36, 2022 Public Safety. Ordinance 21-36, 2022 Public Safety Salary Ordinance and ordinance 21-39, the 2021 Public Safety Salary Ordinance Amendment. These amendments were prepared at the request of Human Resources Department and are in need of a sponsor to introduce them tonight. I will go on record, if it's appropriate, and volunteer to sponsor these two amendments on behalf of Human Resources. If that is her preference when we get to that agenda item. Okay. I do believe we have some legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 21 dash show to be introduced to read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the role?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. It has been moved and seconded that appropriation ordinance 21-02 be introduced and read by the clerk by titles and options only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, appropriation ordinance 21-02, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2022 Civil City Budget for the city of Bloomington. There's no synopsis, and I'm so sorry. I lost the due pass recommendation. I had it up just a second ago. Your due pass recommendation was three, four, two.
Thank you. I had that handy. It was going to help you, but as always, you're Johnny on the spot. Thank you, Court Bowden. Councilmember Flaherty?
I move that appropriation ordinance 21-02 be adopted.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any comments from city representatives this evening?
No, no comments. We encourage you and hopefully you will pass the appropriation ordinance and related salary ordinance as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood, City Controller. We will now go to city council members. Anyone have any questions on ordinance, appropriation ordinance 21-02? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. I had a question about the the official paperwork that goes along with the change that the mayor announced regarding the creation of a new position in ESD to implement our climate action and sustainability plans. The, the department budgets are itemized in budget form one, it seems to me. So I don't know if we need to officially see that the money is being moved from sanitation to ESD for this purpose. Could you speak to that, Mr. Underwood?
Yes, and sorry before, Jeff Underwood, City Controller. We have not made that transfer to that. Those are supporting forms that we use to build up to the ordinance, since it did not change the general fund budget. There was no need for a formal amendment to that ordinance. However, we'll be happy to send those revised exhibits along to Mr. Lucas after the vote this evening. We'll make that change upon the vote, so it'll be in the Form One. It'll move from the general fund sanitation budget, which I believe is in category three, to the ESD budget in category one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council members? Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. I believe this is for Mr. Underwood, if he'd like to pop back in. I appreciate the mayor's suggestion on the issuance of two $5 million general obligation bonds. If you would, could you comment on what that will do to the city's debt level? What is our debt per capita going to do? What is that going to, what are the implications for a need to raise revenue and so forth?
Since these are general obligation bonds, five million each, they will come to the council with resolutions and bond ordinances. You will vote on those and a subsequent property tax rate to support those bonds. We're looking at a five-year payback, so to be relatively quick with, which will minimize the interest payments on it. We'll have about $153 million outstanding at the end of this year. This would add another $10 million based on 85,000 count. We're at about $1,800 per capita. This would raise it to 1918, so about $118 increase. Just, I believe it'll probably be about a six cent, about three cents each. That's, don't quote me on that, but just a quick and dirty calculation on the property tax rate that would be needed to support this.
And is there, for a city our size, you mentioned that the debt per capita is going to go up to nineteen something? Refresh my memory.
Nineteen eighteen.
Nineteen eighteen. Is there an upper limit with which we are comfortable?
Certainly, we, we look at it, you know, we, we look at a combination of factors. We look at the debt per capita. We look at the type of debt that's there. There are basically two types of debt, one that's a tax-based and one that's a revenue-based. We are very low property tax debt. Part of that is that there's a 2% limit on a city general obligation. The Parks Department does not have that limitation, but certainly we look at that in the past. We've issued, and you all, most of you were a part of the last time we renewed those GO bonds for the city and parks. In addition to that, you have utilities, which is probably half of that debt. It's all revenue-based, water and sewer. We have TIF bonds outstanding, and those are revenue-based as well. So we can have a couple of leases, one for the smart meter program for utilities and one for the solar lease for the entire city utilities as part of that. In fact, we'll be coming to you with a couple of refunding issues next month that will help us lower those payments. So we're going to take advantage of lower interest rates and the ability to refund those. So we continue to monitor it. We're very diligent in working with bond council and our financial advisors on opportunities to lower debt service to increase our bond rating. So it's a combination of all those factors. So I wouldn't say there's an upper limit, but we tend to fall much like with property taxes and overall taxes at the lower end of our comparable cities and towns here in Indiana. So we're at the low end, so I'm comfortable with that.
Very helpful. Thank you for that context.
Thank you, Councilmember Scamblerie. Do we have any, Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. My, my connection was unstable, and so I hope this isn't redundant, but Mr. Underwood, right now, are you proposing servicing these bonds from the general fund or a separate revenue stream, or is that yet to be decided?
These are general obligation bonds, so they'd be property tax-based.
Property tax-based, okay.
So you, once, if approved by the council and the bonds were sold, then we would apply to the Department of Local Government Finance for a property tax rate to support those.
I see. Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any more first round questions from Councilmember Volin?
Yes, Mr. Underwood, could you give us an example of what any other city in the state, what their debt level is compared to ours?
I would say at the top end of the scale is Carmel. I know they've probably got somewhere between 300 and 500 million dollars, if not more, in, in debt. So that, that's, and then we fall, like I say, at the lower end of that, so.
Yeah, I was going to say Fishers, I just did a quick Google. They're about $284 million in debt. 900,000 people there in the 2,800 dollar per person range. So we're, I mean, it sounds like we're relatively low compared to those cities.
Yes, yeah. I mean, when we look at the top 15 to 18 cities in the state, both from a tax and a debt per capita, we're in total debt, we're at the lower end of that. And again, most of our debts, I like, over half of it is with utilities. So that's not unusual because they're so capital-intensive with what they do. So we really try to manage the debt that's out there, make sure that we've got adequate debt coverage or property tax rates to do it and really strive hard to keep our bond rating as high as possible. That lowers our, our interest rate. And we have been, we have had that increase in the last several years. So we have, for a city our size, and we have a very good debt rating as well.
How, how much debt might we take on that might begin to have an effect on our bond rating?
It would certainly depend on the type of debt that's issued. If it's a revenue, you know, they're looking at debt coverage, so they're looking at one and a half to two times. So it's kind of a twofold. They're a little less concerned on property tax as long as they're seeing steady to strong growth in assessed value, employment. The university obviously is, is a though they don't pay property taxes, they're a big employer. The things that they like about us is that we have a fairly diverse employment base that's not subject to one particular segment really affecting us. We've shown steady growth in our AV and our employment. Obviously, the, the last census was a little disappointing, but we think there's errors in that. So we think it's adjusted, that'll show growth. So I used, you know, had record enrollment. So a lot of positive things continue to happen even during the pandemic. So I think we'll continue to see good.
Last quick question is, our current bond rating again is what?
Double A, double A.
Not double A minus, double A straight?
Double A straight. We were at double A minus and moved up because we were double A minus with a positive outlook, and on the last one, we moved up.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I'm going to mute myself. Any further first round questions from Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Piedmont Smith's question and just make sure I'm understanding correctly. Mr. Underwood, did you suggest that any any changes that would need to be made in terms of the allocation of general fund dollars and sanitation versus going to the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development, reflecting the changes that Mayor Hamilton mentioned, that those can be made after? I guess I'm struggling to see where, where it's reflected or where it should be reflected. Can you just run through that again one more time?
Yeah, we, because you've not voted on, on, the appropriation ordinance doesn't change. So the, the mayor has committed to that. So prior to, we have five, five business days after your vote to submit all of our forms, including the signed ordinance is assuming a positive vote on the budget tonight, I will update those forms and resend the exhibits to Stephen. So you'll have them tomorrow, and then as soon as I have all the signatures on the ordinance, then the forms will be submitted. But you'll have them in your hands before we submit, so you'll, you'll see that we've made that change.
Okay, was it, was it a timing issue, like difficult to make that? Obviously, the packet went out last Friday, and this announcement, I think, was made yesterday via press release. Was that?
Yes, it was a timing issue.
Okay. Can, can I ask, I know it's a bit premature, but just wanting to make sure I understand the whole picture among all these ordinances. What about the salary ordinance? Is it any different in that case, 2137?
We, we will come back to you with an amendment to the salary ordinance only because we have a process where jobs, the, the job description and position created, it goes to a job evaluation committee, it gets graded, it'll get assigned a grade and a salary range. And at that point, we would come back and amend the salary ordinance to add that position in. Again, it's a matter of timing. We've just, you know, this didn't happen. We don't have a job description and a grade, but we've allocated a dollar amount that we think is adequate to fund the position, benefits and taxes.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first round questions from council members? Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the public. For any public comment on appropriation ordinance 21-02, you can please indicate your desire to speak by using the raised hand function in Zoom. And you can get there by using the participants button or the reactions button or the more buttons at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you're on a mobile device or a mobile phone, you can reach us by star nine. And if neither of those work, please send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person this evening, and we ask that you identify yourself when speaking. Okay, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, first up is Greg Alexander. Hi, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. Unfortunately, I, I'm speaking from a great deal of ignorance, especially about, about the two bonds. I just don't know anything about them. But what I've read suggests that one of the bonds would be for parks, and I, you know, I don't want to be, to suggest bad faith, but but that's exactly what I'm going to do. I mean, we gave parks a bond already for transportation for the Cascades Trail, and they simply decided not to do it. And then we gave them, I think it's that same bond, incidentally, has a different part for Griffey Lake Trail, and the, the bond specified it was going to be the, was it the, the west end of the lake that was going to receive the first stage of the trail? And instead, they're doing it on the east end. Well, why does that matter? It matters to me because it was going to connect on the west end of the lake. It was going to connect to the Cascades Trail. And so like everything attached to the Cascades Trail basically isn't happening, even though we already funded it. So I, I, I'm just astounded at the idea of giving parks more money, especially for any sort of climate goals. They just don't have a track record. They simply shouldn't be a part of any transportation funding. And on that same note, the idea of having ESD, you know, it's got sustainability in its name, but that department has done nothing but stonewall climate activism and cheerlead for garages. It's really discouraging to see anything resembling progress be put under that umbrella. So again, I don't know what you should do, and honestly, I don't know as much as I'd like to about, about any of this proposal. But man, it's, it's really hard to be optimistic about it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, we'll give it just another second. Okay, and seeing no indications, we'll return to council members for final comments on appropriation ordinance 21-02. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, President Sims. I'll be brief. I, I'm very pleased and supportive of the proposal by the mayor to incorporate $5,000 into base salaries for police officers. And it remains to be seen what will be proposed in the negotiations coming forward. But committing $5,000 in base salary is very helpful to moving us into a position of competitiveness with peer cities. That said, just to be clear, what we've, many of us have said over the past weeks is that to be truly competitive with other peer cities, in this sense, Kalia-certified cities, it will require more. It will require 10, 10 to 12,000 dollars. But that's a trajectory that we can be on, and I see 5,000, as we've stated in our resolution, as a, as a good start. It will take time to make up for the losses that we've sustained. And that is apart from expectations of annexation, which will require even more police staffing. And I'm very pleased also that my colleague and advocate for increased police pay, Susan Sandberg, will be council's representative. I think that's, that's a very important role that we need to play. And then lastly, regarding the climate proposal, I, I would have, my preference would have been a cabinet-level position. I, Councilmember Piedmont Smith is advocated for that and others, I think, over time. Because it sends a stronger signal. It also communicates the, the, the degree of commitment by the mayor. But I think this will be helpful to have someone specifically dedicated to climate. I'd like to make a small correction, and that is the first greenhouse gas study was done in two thousand and seven by the E C and the Sustainability Commission. But in any case, we need to follow the Sustainability Action Plan. And I'm favorable to these proposed bonds. Of course, I need to know specific uses. I think it would be helpful and going forward, I should say, that an estimation of those uses and return on investment would be very helpful to me to determine whether to support them or not. So I'll be supporting this ordinance this evening. And I appreciate all my colleagues over the past weeks and, and the mayor discussing these, these issues and coming to some resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo, Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I certainly do appreciate any movement forward with regard to the police salaries. I, I too applaud Chief Decoff and his leadership in the Police Department. We do have a Kalia certified team. That is something to be proud of. But as we talk about the things we're proud of, I think where we do have differences, when I say we, I, I think a majority of the council with the administration is the sense of urgency in which we need to address the staffing shortages at the B P D. And just for example, some of the information that we've received on the recruiting end from twenty nine applicants that we recently had apply, twenty moved on for interviews, seven of those were sent for backgrounds, five of those passed the background, one applicant dropped out. Bottom line, we have three currently that we're in the process of making offers to. And this just gives you an idea of the difficulty on the recruiting end. It's difficult, it's time consuming. And of those three, they will obviously, if offers are made and accepted, they're going to have to go through training. It's going to take time. Then when we look at the retention end, it looks like we're going to be losing another officer on November the 10th. And that's the fifteenth officer we've lost this year and the eighth to go to another law enforcement agency. At this time, I understand, or at least as of November 10th, we'll have eighty eight officers covering the three shifts. And so with seventy two officers lost since January six, twenty sixteen, sixty six officers hired since twenty sixteen. This is why we feel this sense of urgency that I, I hope has been conveyed to, to all members of this community with respect to the public safety issue and the Bloomington Police Department. I too will be supporting this budget. I am pleased with the progress that has been made over the last couple of weeks with the commitment to the fact that there is a sense of urgency here that we all need to attend to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Okay, thank you. Seeing that, I too will support appropriation ordinance twenty one dash oh two. I had the pleasure and honor of making a few remarks when the Bloomington Fire Department was awarded its I S O first class rating. One of the lines in my comments was that teamwork makes the dream work. Now moving that over to what we do in local government, local city government. What I mean by that is when we all work together, when we're collegial, when we are respectful and when we have meaningful dialogue, then I think we can move forward on making decisions as we move along. This budget is not perfect. I think my colleagues, or I'll just speak for myself, I don't think the budget is perfect. But I do know that the budget has significantly improved over the last weeks of discussion with administration, which I do appreciate. This council had a resolution, as I stated earlier, to add five thousand dollars to the base pay of our sworn officers. And instead, we got a five thousand dollar bonus over five quarters. Now that to me is moving toward middle ground. Working in order to reach a consensus. And I'm encouraged with the regard from the administration saying that as we move forward with negotiations, they will begin with the base salary that we think is a good beginning and where it should start. I will also say that, again, this budget isn't perfect. There were calls for a cabinet level, department head or cabinet level climate action position in order to monitor. We did not get that this year, but what we did get was another staff person to work with our climate action person in E S D. And that increases the capacity of that position to hopefully improve and make further strides in the area of climate action and mitigation. Again, it's not perfect. I think it's greatly important. It has been improved over the last several weeks. And I think many of us, our input in there was critical in getting to this point. So if we have no other questions from council members or final comments, I should say.
President Sims.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank the mayor, Mr. Underwood and all the department heads for their hard work on this year's budget. The budget process was grueling this year. But I appreciate that I, my colleagues on the city council, as well as the mayor, have had more communication this year than in the past. And I believe the council has more, had a greater input into this budget than at any other time in my service on the city council. And I think that is excellent. And we should continue to have this sort of vigorous dialogue in the future, preferably not this late in the season. But I think this is a positive step that there has been more negotiation and conversations between the administration and council members on the budget. I will be supporting the budget this evening. As Council President Sims said, some colleagues and I were quite insistent that we have a high level director level position on climate action. And that, in my, in my view, that is not only because of the existential urgency of the topic, but also in reviewing the progress that has been made and comparing that with our adopted plans. For example, the Sustainability Action Plan, we are behind fulfilling our plans. And so it was very clear to me that we needed not only more staff hours, but somebody at a high level to make sure that we fulfill the plans that we, with much public input, had committed to. So I'm a bit disappointed that we didn't get that high level position. We did get more staff hours, so, so that's, that's very good. And I will look forward to seeing a revision to the salary ordinance so that we can fund that position starting as soon as possible in the new year. There were, there was a lot of give and take with this budget. Some colleagues and I did begin with a memo to the mayor's administration on July 1st with several items that were not met. You know, we, we had meetings with the mayor and we wanted several items, especially in regard to sustainability and transportation investments that, that were not met. We do look forward to, or I look forward to the general obligation bond proposal. It's a bit premature to talk details at this time, but I think the idea is, is certainly right that we need to have another revenue source in order to implement transportation that is not relying on, on fueled vehicles, on carbon emitting vehicles for, to get, to, to make it more feasible for people to, to, to go to other forms of transportation. Sorry, I, I'm rambling a little bit, but it's, it's difficult to collect my thoughts as after, you know, these many months of discussions. But there were some things that, that we, we didn't see. We were hoping to get a composting pilot program. We were hoping to, to have at least a pilot program of snow removal of heavily traveled pedestrian corridors, because that's an eternal struggle to, for people who have to walk places or bike places that the snow is not removed promptly from sidewalks. There were some other items such as a more comprehensive paid family leave program. And maybe we can, we can address that next year after we've started with the paid family leave, which is great. It's exciting that we are starting that with this budget. We also talked about some additional conversations about closing Kirkwood Avenue to, for pedestrian use on a longer term. And we wanted a charrette to study that. And finally, the, one of the first things on our list was actually comprehensive housing strategy, which has, we have, don't have a commitment that that will be developed. We do, there have been discussions with John Zodi and others about kind of merging some plans that already exist and kind of crystallizing where we want to go. So, so I think there's, there's some good hope on that front as well. So I'd just like to say again that even though it's been a struggle, I think that this has largely been a good conversation among colleagues and with the administration. And we will certainly follow up on some of these items and also on the, the commitments the mayor just recently made with the final changes to the budget. And we look forward to working together to implement our common goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I, I just, I guess I wanted to follow Councilmember Piedmont Smith because I had some very similar remarks written down here. And I'm going to kind of just skip over those. I, I had really just made a list of other priorities that some of us were really pushing for. And Councilmember Piedmont Smith touched on most of those. I have some other specifics, just that, I mean, in general, I think it's important that we make significant progress on our phase one goals of the city's climate action plan. And I know we're, we're working on that in many different ways. I mean, one now is hiring another employee in the office to work on sustainability. And I think that is great. And some of those goals that we need to start working on were listed out in one of our memos to expand solar beyond residential homes. And I mean, that would, that's, that's even more so specifically like beyond single family homes, right? But we want to look at expanding solar to multifamily homes, how we can get apartment buildings and condos to start getting to take advantage of programs, you know, to subsidize solar and get that going. Commercial and industrial solar as well, some pilot programs for that, conducting a food security assessment and developing strategies to decrease food insecurity in the areas of our community that need it the most. I think we're doing one corridor study as the transportation plan calls for. It would be good to do the other major thoroughfares as well. These are just some things that did not get into the budget that I think are very, very important here. I am looking forward to, as other folks have, have talked about, well, I guess I would also say a pay as you throw program. It sounds like a lot of council members are interested in this and I would hope some of us can get together in the coming months to work on, work on some sort of pay as you throw, whether it be a pilot or a new, a new city system. Because I think that is something that we don't even need to wait for the budget on, but can do that at any time, just with an ordinance from us. I think what is good is the facilitating development for ADUs to be built, looking at differences in the budget, but looking at what different cities are doing, so having some designs available for folks to get those started. So it's easier and not as expensive for people wanting some ADUs to, to get those. The parking cash out for city employees, I think, is a really good start. The general obligation bonds to look at supporting investments in our citywide adopted plans and go, goals, specifically the high priority bike network, network and sidewalk connectivity. I mean, mostly I think, you know, we are two really big things for me. We are in a climate crisis and that will not be going away in our lifetimes. And just really remembering the fact that this is, the study is a couple of years old now, but there is a part of this population here that does not feel included and does not feel welcome in Bloomington. And I think continuing to work on those two issues is a really big, a really big deal to me and really important. I think, I think we're making some good moves in this budget. I think we need to be making bolder moves based on where we are with climate and our own housing crisis and then people not feeling comfortable living here. I think sometimes we have really good ideas, I mean, the city in general, really good ideas. And if the ideas are out there, but there's not always the will to do it. And I think making change can be really hard. It can be a challenge and it can feel uncomfortable. But I think it is up to us and the administration to sometimes make some hard decisions to move forward in the right way as a community, even if it feels uncomfortable at times. I'm supporting this budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Councilmember Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think most people have said sentiments that I share. You know, we are a city that we are very recently proud of. We also recognize that there are significant shortcomings in our city. So for every, you know, I S O one rating we get, we also have a problem with attracting new police officers and so on. So I'm not going to go over those points again, but I do want to point out sort of the, the meta aspect of it. I mean, I think that this is the first year in a decade or more that I've really seen members of council, regardless of their perspective, recognize the limits of our ability to directly change a budget and have expressed a willingness to vote no in order to get that budget changed. I know that there have been strongly held feelings on a number of issues for years. And yet, when it came time to even the committee of the whole recommendation to the council, members were, were skittish about voting no. And I think finally a dam is broken. It's about time. I'm very happy to see members at least willing to express it, being ready to vote no. This process was pushed to the very, to the very limit, honestly. On the other hand, I also want to say how encouraged I am that the mayor rose to our challenge. And while, as he would say, and any of my colleagues would say, no budget is perfect, as the president himself has said, well, you know, he could have, he could have not risen to the challenge. He could have refused to make changes to the budget. So I'm encouraged by both occurrences. I do think that it's no longer acceptable for members to go back on their heels. Like we have to advocate strongly for the things we, I mean, and the fact that there was so many different competing concerns, I think, is what really made the administration recognize, look. recognize, look, they can't take the council for granted. So I am very glad to see these results. I do wish there had been more of the things we were pushing for, but I think that next year's budget is going to be very interesting as well. And I want to thank my colleagues and the mayor for the resulting collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President Sims. Yeah, we came a long way on this budget, and we should all be very proud of the work we've done. And I want to especially thank Mayor Hamilton, I want to thank Don Griffin, Assistant Deputy Mayor Don Griffin, Controller Jeff Underwood, and all the staff that testified in front of us and told us all the things, answered all our questions. Governments really incremental, and things like this, I think we just, you know, my perspective is glasses half full. We pushed it farther. We got some really great things going. Is it perfect? No. But I applaud the mayor and the administration for coming our direction for things we really were passionate about and advocated for. The outcomes were great. I'd like to see the process a little bit easier. It was bumpy, as we'll all agree. But I'd like to just congratulate everybody that was involved in it. It ended up being a really good budget, and thanks to all that participated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thanks. I'll be supporting this ordinance as well, and I just wanted to speak to two things. One is sort of a high-level structural thing, and second is some climate things going on. First, certainly like my colleagues, appreciate all the hard work on the side of city staff that goes into producing departmental budgets and working with the administration, working with council member priorities and negotiations and discussions to arrive at and tweak and refine the budget. I know it's a lot, a lot of work, and I appreciate all that time, especially from certainly Jeff Underwood and his staff, and the mayor and his team. So I appreciate, like my colleagues, that I think we saw more significant coming to a middle ground between council priorities and some of what the mayor brought to us initially than we did last year, certainly, which is my other direct budget experience. I think we still have room to refine the process. I think it was, it went better this year than it did the year before, as we tried to formalize things a bit more, but I think we can continue to critically rethink all aspects of that, really, that maybe we want to start some conversations earlier in the year, maybe we want to space some things out differently, you know, in the middle and later part of the year. But I'll mention, too, I don't see our roles with the mayor in this process as equals exactly. I think we are co-equal branches of government, but I think the mayor, of course, bears a much, much bigger responsibility and role in developing the budget than we do as council members. But I think, in my view this year, all council members, in their various priorities that we shared, did keep ourselves to a limited set of issues that were critical or most important to us, that they were grounded in, you know, either the values that our community espoused and we run for office on, or that are in our adopted plans and goals, which reflects the, you know, sort of democratically arrived at view of where the city is headed. So I will say that I recognize the difference in our roles, and I don't, but I don't think we were out of bounds in what the role of the council should be as a fiscal body for the city, exercising some level of oversight to, in my view, hold us accountable to the plans and commitments we've made. On that front, you know, I think there's been some really promising things that were shared last week, as well as by the mayor more recently, on the climate front. I think, we'll see what the details look like, of course, as we move forward with the idea of general obligation bonds, but I think in the context of transportation infrastructure in particular, we all know that's very capital intensive and will require capital investment to meaningfully shift mode share and try to reduce that sector of emissions. And of course, there's many co-benefits that come with that, health and safety and quality of life and all that. But we'll speak briefly to the high-level position, the idea that we should have a director or cabinet-level person probably in the office of the mayor. And I sent a longer email to some city staff and my colleagues to this effect this weekend, just explaining my thinking there a little bit more, and also clarifying, because I've said it before here, but it probably needs to be said, or can't be said enough, which is that I don't see that policy view as a criticism, and I don't mean it to be a criticism of our excellent Assistant Director of Sustainability or our Director of Economic and Sustainable Development, both of whom I think do a terrific job in their respective roles. I see it more as a twofold issue. One is capacity. I think we, it became apparent to me through discussions and questions that we do need increased capacity to administer and implement the climate action plan we've adopted, which is a very busy and detailed plan. And I think the additional role in ESD will help us get there. We need programmatic support, and I have every confidence in Ms. Clemens in administering that and helping us meet that plan if we have adequate funding and staff capacity. But I think the high-level position idea is that there are things that are outside the context of the climate action plan that still have significant climate impacts and/or opportunity costs associated with them. So when we think about things like very substantial parking garage investments or convention center expansions, or even the way other decisions are being made in the context of sanitation that we just discussed last week as well, and some of what's going into that framework for decision-making, I think, my view is it would be helpful to have somebody at a director or peer level whose central mission is climate justice, you know, climate mitigation, adaptation, and in an equity-focused way, to weigh in on some of these bigger-level decisions. And, you know, I don't know every inner working of the city government and who's in what conversations, of course, but I think my view over a few, you know, a number of years of being involved in city government, either directly as a representative or as an advocate before, is that we do need somebody with that framework and that lens and that task more central to some of the cabinet-level conversations that happen. I'll probably continue to hold that opinion. It's, the more I look around, the more I realize other cities are doing this, especially cities that are doing a great job at leading on climate change. I would count us among them in Indiana. Other cities are staffing up like we are. South Bend's trying to hire a second person to help implement their plan. Indianapolis has multiple folks. But when I look around the country, the cities that are really leading have, you know, even bigger departments. They're usually housed pretty close to the office than mayor. Finally, I just want to recognize the other good things that are happening on this front, suggestions coming from ESD and that we heard the other week regarding the formation of a Green Ribbon Panel to get multi-sectoral buy-in and input on a community-wide plan, as well as more collaboration between the council's Climate Action and Resilience Committee and the staff working on this, as well as the internal climate working group and council participant in that. So I see this as some really positive steps forward that I think we'll continue to review and assess our progress and how we're doing, you know, and how these decisions play out over the next year based on some really significant changes. So just wanted to kind of talk through that particular policy area and my views on it and why I advocated for what I did and why I'm pretty encouraged by some of these steps. So thank you again to Mayor Hamilton, everybody in city staff for their work on this, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, thank you. In my comments two weeks ago, like many others, I observed that budgeting is not about the ideal, it's about navigating and negotiating trade-offs and finding an optimal balance of priorities. And I also said that in that regard, I think we had room for additional work to be done, and the last two weeks provided exactly that. Sure, there are elements of this budget that, from my perspective, are not ideal, but as a council member, I don't believe that gives me sufficient reason to vote down an entire budget and force the city to move forward with the 2021 budget, as we've heard about the last few weeks. More to the point, even in the midst of our bold ambitions as a city, and we should have those, we still want our city staff to receive the raises they deserve. We want to ensure that the Jack Hopkins Grants, on which so many social service agencies rely, are still part of next year. We also want to keep up on vehicle replacement and maintenance that allows us to keep the ISO and the Kalia certifications. And most of all, we don't ever want to compromise, I don't ever want to see us compromise the quality of our basic services, public safety, sanitation, streets, parks, and more, on which our residents rely. Yesterday, we all saw the press release with the mayor's update on the proposed 2022 budget. And for the first time, we saw a statement in writing that the administration will not only provide a $5,000 retention bonus over the next 14 months, but it will also seek the base increase in salary beginning in 2023 that many of us had argued for. I sincerely appreciate the hard work of all of my colleagues during this budget process. I think our conversations have been more robust, council has been more clear and focused in its priorities, and administration has been more responsive because of that. And I want to genuinely thank Mayor Hamilton and the directors and staff in Bloomington. These discussions were not always easy, actually, most of the time they weren't. But I believe we have a better budget because of that, and we have a commitment, and paired with that is a commitment related to our upcoming contract negotiations, and all of that together, better response to some of the critical issues facing Bloomington right now. And so I thank you, mayor, and I thank you, council members, colleagues, for this good work.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Not seeing any further comments from council. Are we ready for the question on appropriation ordinance 21-02? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Bowlin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appropriation ordinance 21-02 passes 900. Thank you very much. I do believe we have more legislation ready for second readings tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
I'd like to move that ordinance 21-39 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved, the second that ordinance 21-39 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved the second that ordinance 21-39 be read and be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 21-39, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2022, which fixes salaries for officers of the police and fire departments for the year 2021, regarding pay grade changes for police lieutenants and captains, additional pay and retention pay. Synopsis as follows: This ordinance amends ordinance 2022, which fixes salaries for officers of the police and fire departments for the year 2021. The ordinance changes police lieutenant and captain pay grades and provides retention pay for certain sworn police. Please note, this ordinance was revised after distribution in the legislative packet but before introduction at September 29, 2021 special session, to correct the year listed in section 2D from 2022 to 2021, and your due pass recommendation was 900.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to move that ordinance 21-39 be adopted.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved at second. Councilmember Flaherty, I do believe this is the proper time to introduce or make motion for the amendment.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that motion, if you'd like.
Thank you.
So I would like to move Amendment 1 to ordinance 21-39.
Second?
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved at second. Will Ms. Shaw, will you be the one that will explain this and take questions?
Yes, thank you. So am I to explain the entire ordinance? I mean, do the ordinance or the amendment to the ordinance, Councilmember Flaherty?
The amendment.
Amendment, okay. So Caroline Shaw, HR Director, and thank you, Councilmember Sims, for volunteering to sponsor this amendment. This amendment amends ordinance 21-39, which amends ordinance 2022. The first change is in section 1C, we're revising proposed section 2B to add supervisory sergeants alongside senior police officers, officers first-class probationary officers, to also be eligible for additional pay. And then in section 1C of ordinance 21-39, which shall be amended by revising proposed section 2F by striking at the beginning of quarter four, and clarifying that the retention bonus will be paid in the fourth quarter. We're already past the beginning of quarter four, as you all are well aware. That's the correction there. Any questions about that?
No, ma'am, but can you read the synopsis as well? Do you have it?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
This amendment is sponsored by Councilmember Sims, is prepared at the request of the administration to list the position of supervisory sergeant as eligible for additional pay under the proposed section 2B. And to clarify, when retention payments will be paid on this proposed section 2F?
Okay, thank you very much. We've now moved to council for any questions of Ms. Shaw on Amendment 1 for ordinance 21-39. Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to the public for any public comment on ordinance 21-39. I'm sorry, Amendment 1. Thank you. Oh, and I'll also say, if you have desire to make public comment, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. You can get there by using the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons. I'm at the bottom of the screen, or if you have a mobile device or a phone, you could reach us with star nine. If neither of these work, please feel free to send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. You will be allotted three minutes, and please identify yourself once you've been recognized to speak. Have any taggers, Mr. Lucas?
Okay. Do not see any, no.
Thank you, neither do I. We will now return to council for any final comments on Amendment 1 for ordinance 21-39. Okay, seeing none. It's been moved at second. Well, I'm sorry, got caught up here. Mr. Parliamentarian, the votes required, is this a required two-thirds majority vote? I'm not mistaken?
No, I believe it's just a majority.
Just a majority vote.
At this moment, yeah.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty, thank you so much.
It's okay. I think there's a slight delay with this set of headphones, so I'll account for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on the motion to adopt Amendment 1 for ordinance 21-39, passes 90. I do believe we have ordinance vote. I'm not mistaken?
No, it'd be, I believe it's just a majority.
Just a majority vote.
At this moment, yeah.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty, thank you so much.
It's okay. I think there's a slight delay with this set of headphones, so I'll account for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on the motion to adopt Amendment 1 for ordinance 21-39, passes 90. I do believe we have ordinance vote.
Okay. Do not see any, no.
Thank you. Neither do I. We will now return to council for any final comments on amendment one for ordinance 21 dash 39. Okay, seeing none. It's been moved in second with I'm sorry, got caught up here. Mr. Parliamentarian, the, the vote required, is this a required two-thirds majority vote? I'm not mistaken.
I believe it's just a majority.
Just a majority of them.
This moment, yeah.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty, thank you so much.
It's okay. I think there's a slight delay with this set of headphones, so I'll account for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on the motion to adopt amendment one for ordinance 21 dash 39 passes 9 0. I do believe, do believe we have ordinance, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty.
I was just moving on ahead, so where I think you were going, which is I'd like to move amendment two to ordinance 21 dash 39.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. And we introduce amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 31. Again, I will ask Ms. Shaw to be the recipient of any questions and to address this amendment, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Ordinance number 21 39, amendment two. Ordinance 21 39 shall be amended by inserting a new section 1C and renumbering subsequent sections accordingly. The new section 1C shall read as follows. Ordinance 2022 fixed salaries for police officers of the police and fire departments and shall be amended by revising the paragraph following the contractual salaries table in section 2A of ordinance 2022 and strike $2,000 and replace it with $2,500. This is the synopsis. This was amendment was prepared at the request of the Human Resources Department to correct the 20-year longevity pay, which increased from $100 per year to $125 per year with the most recent police collective bargaining agreement. And I believe this is probably an error that we just caught recently with the, with the, thanks, Paul Post. So we've just fixed that. It's probably been in the, all the ordinances, and we're correcting it now. And I appreciate your support, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. And I'll start questions from council. And this is mostly a housekeeping action. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and thank you, and Mr. Paulson, whoever all caught that mistake. Like to correct those things. Okay, do we have any questions from council members on amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 39? Seeing none, we go to the public. If there's any public comment on amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 39, please indicate your desire to speak publicly by using the raised hand function in Zoom. Mobile device or mobile phone can reach us by star nine or send a note to meeting host via chat function on Zoom. You will be allowed three minutes to comment. Okay, seeing none. You see any, Mr. Lucas? Thank you. We'll move or return to council for any final comments on amendment two of ordinance 21 dash 39. Okay, seeing none. It's been properly moved in second for amendment two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory? Councilmember Scambalory?
You would think it was my first Zoom meeting. Sorry, yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes 9 0. And we will now return to ordinance 21 dash 39 as amended. Do we have any questions from council member or staff? I'm sorry, for Ms. Shaw. When ordinance 21 39 as amended. Okay, seeing none, we will go to the public for any public comment on ordinance 21 dash 39 as amended. Again, I'll let you know, you can reach us or indicate your desire to speak by using the raised hand function in Zoom. You can contact us with a mobile device or a phone through star 69, or you can send the meeting host a note via chat to indicate you'd like to speak. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll return to council for any final comments on ordinance 21 dash 39 as amended. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 21 dash 39 as amended?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And ordinance 21 dash 39 as amended is adopted 9 0 0. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to move that ordinance 21 dash 36 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second that ordinance 21 dash 36 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved the second ordinance 21 dash 36 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 21 36, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2022. Synopsis, synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the minimum and maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2022 in accordance with council approves collective bargaining agreements. Your due pass recommendation was 4 0 5.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to move that ordinance 21 dash 36 be adopted.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. And I do believe we have two more amendments for ordinance 21 36. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to move amendment one to ordinance 21 dash 36.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Ms. Shaw, if you don't mind, I'll lean on you again to introduce that and explain that amendment.
I don't mind at all. Thank you, and I thank you again for sponsoring these amendments. There are a lot of technical parts in these salary ordinances, as I'm sure you all are aware. So thank you for your patience with our little last-minute corrections. Section, our ordinance 21 36, section 2B of this ordinance shall be amended by adding supervisory sergeants alongside senior police officers, officers first class, and probationary officers as eligible for additional pay. In synopsis, this amendment is proposed, is a sponsored by Councilmember Sims. It was prepared at the request of the administration to list the position of supervisory sergeant as eligible for additional pay under the proposed section 2B. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Shaw. We will now go to council for any questions of Ms. Shaw for amendment one of ordinance 21 dash 36. Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to the public. If there's any public comment on amendment one for 21 dash 36, please indicate your desire to speak by using the raised hand function on Zoom. You can reach us through a mobile device or your phone by using star nine, or you can send a note to the meeting host via chat function on Zoom, and you will be allowed three minutes to comment. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
It doesn't look like it, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go back to council for any final comments on amendment one for ordinance 21 dash 36. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment one for ordinance 21 dash 36?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And amendment one passes 9 0. Councilmember Flaherty, I believe we have, there you go, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to move amendment two to ordinance 21 36.
Second?
Thank you. Amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 36 has been properly moved in second. Ms. Shaw, we will lean on you for this other one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm happy to report this is the final amendment of amendments this evening. So ordinance 21 36, amendment two amends section 2A by revising the paragraph following the contractual salaries table to strike $2,000 and replace it with $2,500, just like in the previous one and for the other ordinance. Synopsis, this amendment was prepared at the request of the Human Resources Department to correct the 20-year longevity pay, which increased from $100 per year to $125 per year with the most recent collective bargaining agreement. Thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to council. If we have any questions for amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 36. Seeing none, we will go to the public for any public comment on amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 36. Give you a second, Mr. Lucas, and see if anyone has indicated themselves. Okay, I see none. Okay, thank you. We will now return to council for any final comments on amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 31. Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment two for ordinance 36, say that, 21 36? Yeah, hear me.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
And Boland?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amendment two for ordinance 21 dash 36 passes 9 0. And we will now return to ordinance 21 dash 36 as amended. We will go to council for any questions. Ordinance 21 dash 36 as amended. Seeing none, we'll go to the public for any public comment on ordinance 21 dash 36. Please use the raised hand function in Zoom if you intend to comment. You can use the participants button, reactions button, or more buttons. Mobile devices and phones may reach us at star nine, or you could send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. You will have three minutes for comment, and please identify yourself if there's any takers, Mr. Lucas.
I see no takers at the moment.
Right, thank you. We'll now return to council for any final comments on ordinance 21 dash 36 as amended. Okay, seeing no further comments. Are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 21 dash 36 as amended?
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ordinance. Thank you, court board. Ordinance 21 dash 36 as amended is adopted 9 0 0. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I would like to move that ordinance 21 dash 37 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second that ordinance 21 dash 36 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
21 37.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What did I say?
36, I believe, yeah.
Okay, thank you for the correction. 21 37. Will the clerk please call the roll? Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Boland?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 9 0. And it has been moved to second that ordinance, let me get it right, ordinance dash 21 dash 37 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 21 37, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2022. Synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2022 salary for all appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana. Your due pass recommendation was 2 5 2.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to move that ordinance 21 dash 37 be adopted.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Is Ms. Shaw, you're going to present ordinance 21 37 again? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we, as you know, we covered, or I covered this in detail on Wednesday, August 29, I believe. And I'll just hit the highlights now. I don't have to cover even the highlights, since we haven't done that for the prior ordinances. It's your call. Would you like me to answer questions? If you have any questions? I know you have memos in all of this.
Yes, yes, we do. I think that will be sufficient for me. Seeing no objections from my council members. Okay, thank you. We will now move to council for any questions on ordinance 21 dash 37. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, Ms. Shaw, what is the living wage going to be for 2022?
$14.01 in 2022.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I assume that the lowest wage is reflected in this ordinance. Do not go below that.
It doesn't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Any other questions from council? On ordinance 21 dash 37 for Ms. Shaw? Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the count, I'm sorry, to the public for any public comment on ordinance 21 dash 37. If you desire to speak publicly, you will be allowed three minutes. Use the raised hand function on Zoom. Mobile devices can reach us through star nine, or you can send a note to the meeting host to indicate your desire to publicly speak. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move back to council members for any final comments on ordinance 21 dash 37. Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Seven. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmembers Scamalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Seven, it's been adopted nine zero zero. Thank you very much. Council, or I do believe we have another piece of legislation for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to move Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second that the clerk that ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Scamalory?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved the second that ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance Twenty One Thirty Eight, to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year twenty twenty two. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum twenty twenty two salary rate for all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington. Your due pass recommendation was seven zero two.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
I'd like to move that Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second that ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight be adopted. Ms. Shaw, I see you're here to address this again.
Yes, thank you all. This is the fourth of the four this evening, and I appreciate all these good votes. Are there any questions about Ordinance Twenty One Thirty Eight? Which fixes your salaries and other elected officials?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just waiting for questions. Do we have any questions from council on Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to count, I'm sorry, to the public for any public comment on our final ordinance this evening, Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom if you intend to publicly speak. You can get there by using the participants button or the reactions button or the more buttons at the bottom of the screen. Mobile device, mobile devices and phones can reach us by star nine, or you could send a note to our meeting host if none of those options work via the chat function on Zoom. You will have three minutes after you identify yourself. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any comments at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will return to council for any final comments on Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight. And seeing none, are we ready for the question on Ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight? And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scamalory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the ordinance Twenty One Dash Thirty Eight is adopted nine zero zero. Thank you all again for your robust attention and voting on our business this evening. We will now move to matters pertaining to council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you, and thank all of, all of you tonight for your attention to the budget legislation and to all the members of the administration. Just a reminder, the clerk's office will need to obtain signatures from each of you within a timely manner so that the controller's office can provide the budget to the DLGF. So please work with the clerk's office in making sure you have signed up what is placed, and just a reminder that you all will return next week for the council's regular session on November the third.
Thank you, Clerk Bowden.
Just a quick follow up for all the council members. My office will be sending you an email tomorrow morning about getting your signature, so if you could follow up, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much. And seeing we have no other, I'm sorry, Councilmember Scamalory?
Yes, Madam Clerk, do you have a sense of when those documents are going to be available in council offices? Would you believe it's not my first Zoom either? We should have them available in council offices by tomorrow.
Okay, is that it? Okay, again, I think there was some comments. Hopefully, I'm not out of order here. There was comments by my colleagues earlier today about all the progresses, the dialogue, and how we come to some form of agreement on the twenty twenty two budget. I am very thankful for my colleagues, for the administration, for department heads and all others that contributed to this. And I I am an eternal optimist, and I still always believe that no matter how hard it gets sometimes, or it may seem, that teamwork indeed makes the dream work. If we have no more business, then this meeting is hereby adjourned.